...holiday calendar hearing, and I'd like to introduce Andy Hendrickson.
Just real quick, the State Board of Ed used to have a waiver process which is now expired for us, and the new process of using a school holiday for student attendance days is to have a board hearing. So this is an opportunity for the public to talk about us using one of the five holidays for school attendance. In our current calendar, we've used Veterans Day, and we're planning on using Casimir Pulaski Day as student attendance. And the school code says that if we recognize, commemorate, you know, the recipients, you know, if we commemorate Casimir Pulaski with activities, then it would be acceptable, unless you choose otherwise. We do honor Casimir Pulaski in some small ways in the school. Veterans, we do a lot of things, big deals in the schools. So I guess, you know, we'd look for public input in your, I guess, reaffirmation of the calendars that you've already approved for this year, and the calendars that we've set aside for next year, which would also include Veterans Day and Casimir Pulaski Day as school attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Hendrickson. Are there board members who'd like to comment on Casimir Pulaski Day or Veterans Day? Hearing none. Do we need to vote on this, or? Okay. Just a hearing. Are there members of the public who would like to comment? Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Hendrickson. We now, let me see. It is late this evening, and so we're going to change the order of the agenda just slightly, and move first to the auditor's report, and we thank them for staying late this evening. Thank you.
Okay. You have anything to say, or can I just go ahead? Okay. I'm sure I've met some of you at the Finance Committee meetings. My name's Betsy Allen, I'm the Senior Manager on the District 67 account. Myself and Susan Jones met with the Finance Committee in December, I believe it was, to review the audit and other deliverables in detail, in addition to answering any questions that the committee had. So tonight, I'm just going to give you just a brief overview of Miller Cooper and sort of our audit process, instead of going through the whole audit, which we did in detail at the Finance Committee, and also answer any questions that you might have as well. You know, as required by state statute, the district was required to have an annual audit performed each year, and the board is responsible for hiring the firm to complete the audit and order to file the appropriate paperwork with the State Board of Ed. Miller Cooper has been hired by the district for the past, I believe, six years to complete this annual audit, and over the six years, the partner on the job, as well as other staff members and team members, have been changed. Miller Cooper has an institutional service group that specializes in performing audits of school, specializes in performing audits of school districts and other governmental entities. As for this district audit, we performed our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, in which we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. An unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that an entity can receive on their audit report. I also want to point out, we work with your staff throughout the entire year, answering questions they might have, and also start our audit planning process throughout the year. We begin our planning phase of our audit with the district usually in May. At this time, we look specifically at the controls of the district as a basis to design our audit procedures for the work to be performed during the fieldwork phase, the fieldwork phase of our audit. We then return to the district, usually in August, to perform our fieldwork, where we prepare financial statements and other deliverables. As it has every year that we've been here doing the audit, the audit process goes very smoothly and efficiently during our audit time. The business staff is always available to answer questions, and gets us data and information very timely. And this allows us to release our financial statements and other deliverables to the district for filing with the appropriate agencies on a timely basis. I think another thing to point out is that we did not have any material audit adjustments that had to be made, so that goes to the staff of your business office and the good reporting that they do. And lastly, I'd like to remind you as a board, if you have ever any questions throughout the year, that you're more than welcome to contact either myself or Susan Jones. Thank you again for your time, and if you have any questions, I would be very happy to answer them now.
Thank you very much for that report. It did just mention in your letter to the board a couple of control deficiencies that you came across during the year. Could you just go over those quickly?
I believe there was one control deficiency. And can I be honest with you? Alan, do you have that letter with you at all? I printed out District 115's information. Do you not have it? It has to do with the POs.
Buying checks.
Pardon me? Could I borrow your letter? I'm sorry.
I think it was the blank check at Sheridan for the bookstore.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they had a checkbook, and when we were doing audit procedures, you know, they'd bring all their invoices, all their checks reconciliations over to us, and within the checkbook, there were some signed checks by the principal that were not written yet. And it happened to be the day we were here doing that, the principal was here, and we did discuss it with her, and that procedure has been stopped. They did it sometimes to, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, somebody would have to go to a bookstore or somewhere, so they wanted the check, and they didn't know how much it was going to be for, so they would sign a check and give it to them, and we told them that was really not a best practice to be following.
None of the things that you came across were, you know, material or things that were concerned about?
No, and realize in this letter, this is, you know, put in here as a control deficiency, and realize there's three levels of deficiencies. There's a material weakness, a significant deficiency, and control deficiency. So this is the lowest level of any of the deficiencies that we saw. And really, you know, we didn't find anything that was happening and that anything that was wrong. It's just not, it's not a best practice to be signing and leaving blank checks in a checkbook.
Understood, thank you. Do other board members have questions or comments? Hearing none.
I'll just mention, sort of on behalf of the Finance Committee, that we did have a pretty good conversation with the auditors at the Finance Committee, and reviewed it in pretty good detail.
I would agree with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you please stick around for later in the meeting? We might like to talk to you again.
Next item on the agenda is the President's Report. We've been fortunate, at the previous two meetings, to hear from parents about our Mandarin Immersion Program, and the board sincerely appreciates all of their comments, and I can assure you that the district is hard at work on this issue, and that the board is very involved. And we will anticipate, we will announce our plans for the Mandarin Immersion Program in the very, very near future. I'd like to share a couple of personal observations on the input that we've received. As a public school system, we have a responsibility to provide an outstanding educational program in which all students feel welcome, challenged, and equal. Equal not in the sense that they're all the same, but in the sense that they have an equal place in the school by virtue of being a citizen of the community. We don't have a multi-tiered structure where some students are inherently above others, and we can't allow that to happen. In particular, as it relates to language immersion, let me be clear, no parent in Lake Forest should ever have to apologize or feel inferior because their elementary school child doesn't speak Chinese. Clearly, we can do better at ensuring this doesn't happen. That said, the best traditions of our community also honor diversity, open-mindedness, and innovation, and in debating issues like language immersion, it's particularly important to keep this in mind. Decisions in our district should never be based on such things as fear of other cultures, envy, prejudice, misinformation, or innuendo. That is not who we are when we're at our best. As citizens, educators, and elected officials, we don't honor our children or our community when we appeal to these impulses. There are powerful, important, legitimate views on all sides of this issue, and let's continue to discuss and debate them as citizens of a great community with an outstanding tradition of public education. That concludes the President's Report. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I too will be brief. I wanted to invite our community, our community members, to participate in Beyond the Book: A Community Conversation. This was something that I first heard about through one of our, one of our parents, and actually our board president, Mr. Anderson, been very encouraging of it as well. I've read the book, and most of our administrative team has either read it or are in the process of reading. It's called The Smartest Kids in the World by New York Times bestselling author Amanda Ripley, and it fits very nicely into a conversation that we want to have as a community on where we want to go as a school district, who we want to be when we grow up, if you will, so 10 or 20 years from now. What do we want to be known for as a community, and in particular, as one of the most important bodies that is, that supports the students in our community? What do we want to specialize in? Because we can't be good at everything. We can't be the best in class at everything. Amanda Ripley's book, a little teaser on that, if you will, is not full of silver bullets as we've become accustomed to in the school conversation. Instead, it's a story told by a number of American school exchange kids in different countries that she uses to illustrate the contrast in how they educate their children and how we educate ours. And it's also interesting to read the big takeaways. There are a number of big ideas, one of those being how people use time, another one is what level of devotion do they have to solving really difficult problems with students, and the time they spend on task, both at home and in school. There's also, part of this was the district newsletter sent out recently, conversation from Tony Wagner, a leading educational theorist, on the things we should be teaching kids to do as opposed to what traditionally has been done in school. So a large focus on individual achievement instead of collaboration, a large focus on risk avoidance rather than trial and error. And what I'd like everybody in the community to do is to go to the Lake Forest bookstore, and they can get a 10% discount if they go there and buy that. And we will have two community meetings on this, one on February 18th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. here at the West Campus, and another Thursday, February 20th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And I look forward to having more conversation about this book. Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Anderson for encouraging some of our community members to read it, and also encouraging me to get plugged into that. It's a perfect springboard for the mission and vision and goals conversation that we'll have later this month in our town halls. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board on an item, topic of their choosing? Hearing none. The next item on our agenda is reports and discussions. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'd like to ask Mrs. Fagel and Dr. Wilcox, they've got the next version of the CEDA update, it's Curriculum Instruction Technology and Assessment. Mrs. Fagel enjoys the longest title in the school district, and this is an ongoing communication process about all the really significant work that is being done at all different levels across our district. And while we're getting logged in, it's, it is worth pointing out that both Dr. Wilcox and Mrs. Fagel are new, still relatively new in their positions, and we see over and over again the amount of learning they've done about our community, about our staff, and the level of detail that they already know about all sorts of programs, which is evident repeatedly in conversations that we have. So with that, Mrs. Fagel.
Thank you. So, taking off from the title of my position was really an effort very early on to bring together the members of the district leadership team who work in curriculum instruction and technology and assessment, and start to send a really strong message to the staff that we are a team, and that we're all working on the same page of the same book. And that's, that's, that's big in a school district, especially when you have five different buildings. So we started a practice called the CEDA Update, and I graduated to a web-based program, and we send this out every other month, and our district-level leaders contribute articles to it. It is for the staff, and I share it with the board as well. So you, you should have received this in your packet, but I just wanted to show you what the online version looks like, and we try to keep it brief, informative. Some of it is information that we've shared already with the staff, but we've learned that the more you say it, and the more clearly you say it, the more it sinks in. We don't deliver any big news in these updates. It's really to celebrate people's work and also reinforce messages. So streamlining communication is really important to me and to our CEDA team, and this is one effort to that end. Tonight, what Lori and I want to highlight is two items that were in the update. One is about the language arts materials adoption process. My learning curve is huge with this, never having been through an elementary process, but working with Colleen Brueggemann and Lori by my side, I'm learning that it's not like it used to be. So the typical language arts adoption process was your vendors came to present, you had input, and you picked your vendor, and your boxes arrived in a few weeks. They were nice, neat little kits that each grade level would use, and they had their Basil Reader and maybe a few supplementals. It's a lot messier than that now, but it's also a lot more exciting, a lot more interdisciplinary, and a lot more enriching for students. It also is a lot more about differentiating and personalizing instruction, which you hear Lori and I talk about a lot. So what we've decided to do is slow down, so go slow to go fast. Our teachers are very enthusiastic and not afraid to try things in their classroom. They want time to field test different materials, and they're also trying to kind of shift their mindset from what previously was a language arts adoption. It's a shift for them as teachers. It's, you know, just yesterday, a teacher said, "Why can't it just be simple?" And, you know, we all laughed and shrugged our shoulders, but the fact is, it's not, so we want to do it right. Coincidentally, I just learned with my colleague in District 65 that they embarked on a process, and they also decided to slow down for the same exact reason. They want their teachers to feel that they have the best opportunity to make the right decisions. At the same time that we've slowed it down, we're also investing in immediately putting Common Core-aligned resources into the hands of our students, which means they're into the hands of our kids. So there has been an influx this year of resources into the classrooms, into the libraries, into the special education teachers' rooms, the speech-language therapists, they're all wanting to get their hands on Common Core-aligned. It's less, it's less about Common Core as it is about high-quality, in-depth, differentiated texts for kids. That's what they are asking for. As we are providing them with different supplemental materials, at the same time, we're asking them to strongly consider a few major vendors that we would go with. But even when we decide on a vendor, and we bring that to you, we'll be showing you more like Lori describes it, as a package. Okay? So this is going to be our anchor text. For K-2, this is going to be what's used to build literacy, learning how to read. For 3-5 and 6-8, it's more about reading to learn, and these are the texts that we're going to provide kids to read to enhance their content learning. So learning to read, K-2, reading to learn, 3-8. So we feel really good about where we're, where we're at with this, and we just wanted to bring you up to speed because we did tell you that we would be bringing a recommendation for a language arts materials set in spring of this year, and now we're looking at November of next year. But our kids are, I think, benefiting from the time that teachers are taking to think through this, and they're also getting the benefit of supplemental materials in their hands right now. And the second piece that we're going to highlight is our work with math support and our current implementation of Bridges.
Okay, great. Like Lauren said, curriculum now is a really complicated process, and to do it right, you do need to put the time in and provide professional development, because it's not just a kit off a shelf. We're certainly learning that firsthand with Bridges this year. Bridges was a wonderful decision that the district made for K-4, and the teachers, and more importantly, the students are absolutely reaping the benefits of those materials. The math period is different than it used to be. It's segmented into different sections. There is core instruction, but a really key piece of Bridges that the teachers are really embracing and working very hard to make this happen is something called workplaces, and that's where differentiation happens. So you have a core lesson, but then students, at least a few times a week, move into workplaces, and then work on practice that's really geared to extending them. So for some kids, that's extra practice. That can look like an RTI, it actually, in some cases, it is RTI, and we've got someone coming into the room, they're working on practice to boost up a skill where they're struggling based on assessment data we've collected. For other kids, that same assessment data has shown us that they really already are understanding a concept and have a really solid skill base, so we're using that time to extend their thinking and challenge them, connected to the core curriculum. So in all cases, it's core plus. We just recently had the, we've hired math TAs for all the buildings, and that, I think, is just going to be a tremendous support. We're still working out all of the schedules, but they are working hand-in-hand with our math coach, Nikki Hanneman, who for, at the K-4 level, I can't say enough about her. Deb Smith at the 5-8 level also doing tremendous work in working with their math coach. So these, these people are working to identify needs of kids and then provide different ways of giving them the practice that they need to move them forward. And again, that's, that's a complicated process, it's not, but what our goal is more push-in versus pull-out, and more connected versus disconnected. Just this past week, we had some half-days with grade-level teams and Nikki Hanneman. Second grade opted to work with Nikki, the coach, and all the enrichment teachers, so that they could spend their half-day looking at their upcoming unit, Unit 5, and talk about how do we extend this unit for kids that need something more? And similarly, for the kids that are struggling, what are we going to do? So all computers were out, people were looking at the NCTM website, Mary Holt had games and activities, and it was just a lovely, rich discussion. That takes time to really, again, have this rich curriculum. Our goal is to have opportunities for growth for all kids, and that doesn't come in a one-size-fits-all instruction. It's the reason to slow down the LA adoption, to make sure that we, first of all, get this wide range of materials, to provide opportunities for growth and rigor for all kids, and then we have to boost that with the professional development for teachers so that they feel comfortable implementing such a program. It's not opening a teacher's guide and just delivering. There's so much thought and work and planning that teachers are doing behind the scenes. And certainly, in both of these core areas, there is so much growth and development happening. Again, the math, I feel like the math experience for our kids is phenomenal, and teachers, again, just raving, raving, raving. Boy, the kids are doing things now that they never did before, and I'm hearing that across the board at different levels. So that's wonderful. And this comes with another change, which was to stop the leveling that was happening in, in some cases, second, but third and fourth grade. We had kids that were ability grouped. They've moved away from that practice, and they're still finding that they can find, you know, kids are able to, new kids even, rise up and, and show that they are ready for something new and different and more. Really trying to partner more with the enrichment teachers so that they can support the teachers behind the scenes and in the classroom, so it's not such a separate program, but it's really an integrated program, which I think is proving really positive for many, many students. So we're just, again, so pleased with the professionalism that we see from, from the teachers, the incredible work ethic, the desire to do well, ask questions, work hard. One of the other slides in here was the academies, the number of academies that were offered, and the quantity and quality of what came from the participants. Lots of requests for more this spring, teachers stepping up, offering to lead them, some on technology. I mean, just, it's really a very impressive group of educators, and you're really fortunate to have such a talented staff.
I just want to end by taking you to the bottom. Lori and I both attended the Charmed Foundation's Leadership Breakfast, and, you know, one of the most impressive things for me about this community is the partnerships throughout the community beyond the school, and the Charmed Foundation is one example. The guest speaker was phenomenal. Lori and I are actually conspiring to try to get her to come be our opening day speaker for District 67. It was Sue O'Halloran, and she's a professional storyteller, but she just had some great quotes that I shared with the staff, and I, they really resonated with me and the work that we're doing. I think my favorite is, favorite, and she was talking to a group of community leaders, education leaders, "We are head in the clouds, feet on the ground, roll up our sleeves doers." That, that is your District 67 staff. It's not just what we do, but how we show up to do it. It's your values, not your valuables, that matter. So we placed those at the end, hoping that that would inspire our staff to continue their great work.
Thank you very much for the report. You touched on just the academies that you teach and everything. Could you talk just a bit about, more about that? I think it's interesting how teachers come in for more education and training.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if we want to go back up to the slide. We started the year offering academies really specifically related to the Danielson framework, but really what that is, is best practice in teaching. So we had a lot of teachers that were coming to learn about that. An offshoot of that was, you know, and that's a focus on planning your learning environment instruction, and instruction. So we did separate sessions on each of those. Teachers could come to all three, or they could come to, you know, come to one individual if there was one area they really wanted to learn more about. The book, Moving, the next academy was called Moving Toward Excellent, and it was this book, Advancing Formative Assessment in Every Classroom, which is a tremendous book. It has connections to the Danielson framework, but it really talks about all the pieces that we're rolling into curriculum, all these essential, essential elements of helping students to grow, every student, with goal-setting and feedback and those kinds of things. That was a really powerful academy, so much so, the feedback was so great from the teachers that we talked about having the author come for our Tri-District Day, and she is coming. So she's the person that's going to work with all three districts. And then from that, we plan on offering the book talk again, just, and, and all the people that are facilitating, teachers are helping to facilitate sessions that day, they all have the book, and they're planning based on that book. So we have one coming up on conferring. So we're, we want to hear from teachers, where do they want to learn more, and then we're developing sessions for them. Like I said, technology is one where people were asking for, for sessions on that, and I've got the team at DPM, they've got seven different ideas based on a survey that they gave to teachers, where they want to learn more as far as technology integration. So we're going to offer hour-long sessions at DPM for them. So it's really, it's a, it's a supply and demand. If, if they're demanding it, we're going to supply it. And for every hour they get, of attendance, they get an hour of Academy credit. There's no pay. They come just to learn more, and it, and it can factor into their professional responsibilities. A piece of paper that I hung up in, in all the sessions, and it's still outside my door, is "Our best teachers are our best learners." I feel really strongly about that. The ones that are coming to learn, that's what we want teachers to do. When they're open to learning, we all benefit.
They do earn credit towards a lane change, but it's, it's well over 100 hours. So they're not coming, that's not an instant gratification. They're even requesting, you know, in particular, we had teachers saying, "Well, we'd be willing to come at 6:30 if we could run one then, in the morning." So it's, it's built into the contract. It's something that's been in place in the district, I believe, a long time. I think it's ebbed and flowed in popularity, but it's, it's an amazing in-house staff development, kind of professional learning school. We're leading them, but teachers are leading them too, so it's...
They're also doing individual book studies at buildings, those count for Academy credit. Renee Devore did one called Fifteen Fixes for Broken Grades, and now the 5-6 side's going to offer the same one. So it's where teachers can really analyze best practice around grading and reporting, and so that's going to be happening on the 5-6 side in the next month. So again, it's really lovely to see so many people so interested in continuing their professional learning.
Fantastic, thank you. Other questions?
I think this is such a valuable tool that you've created here, filled with so, so much very pertinent information, and I can't quite recall if this is disseminated through the wider community.
It's not, and so that's something that, that we can continue to talk about, and I can talk with Ann about in terms of, you know, I, I've thought... talk with Ann about in terms of, you know, I've thought, we've thought about that, you know, again, reminding ourselves, who's the audience right now? It's for staff, and you see it as well. We have other community communication tools, so the question is, where does this fit in? It's certainly easy in terms of being online. I mean, it's very easy to construct and move around. So, you know, it's just a question of where it fits into the bigger communication scene, and it's new, but definitely that's on our radar is, if we're writing it for a different audience, does it mean a whole separate publication, or could we meet both communication needs at once?
Just a suggestion, as I'm looking through the insight that came out, it might be, I don't know, it could be a great addition even if the font is small enough to do a front and a back.
Or a link to it, right? Just a link. If you want to hear even more specifics about curriculum and instruction, so you're not going to hear about huge programs, but just kind of tidbits, log in, you know? Yeah, so that's a great idea. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on the math support part. You guys know, some of you may or may not know, I may have been the harshest critic in the district on this topic over the past year. For those who don't know, we had a great reading support program, K through 4, and we had a poor math support program, and kids were falling through the cracks. I am really, really, really thankful. I'm really happy with the work you're doing. Mike, I'm happy with you, you know, supporting this work, but I'm grateful and I'm really proud of the work you're doing, so thank you very much. It's making a difference in our kids.
To add to Mike Tier Two Burkowski's comments, I'm wondering if Lori could speak just briefly to the job of math TAs? What does their day look like, and sort of who bosses them around?
Who bosses them around? Well, they were hired by the building principal, and right now, you know, we are in the, it is that we're building the plane as it's flying. I mean, we're really trying to figure out how to personalize this support for the individual students that need it. The three building principals are working together to look at guidelines, but right now, the work of the math TAs is looking a little bit different. The good news is Nikki Hanneman is coordinating with them and giving them all kinds of resources. She sat down and went through games and support materials for Bridges that she feels like these kids are going to need for more reinforcement, ordered them for all three buildings. So we're making sure that they have access to more. It's not just going to be a skill and drill approach. It's really about giving them more opportunities for hands-on learning and practice in a way that feels fun and engaging. That's a really important part. We don't want them to be, either have someone push in or someone pull them out for something that makes math less appealing. We want math to be more appealing. One other piece that I didn't mention that took us a little bit to get up and running is this Dream Box, which is interactive software. We finally have our pilot. Every student K-6 has access. Classroom teachers just got their logins. It's not something that necessarily every single teacher and every single student is going to be using because it truly is on top of, it's supplemental, but it's 100% Common Core aligned. Bridges supports it, Janus supports it. It adapts to every individual student and gives him what he or she needs with practice, and it's very engaging. All visual models. So we're in a 68 trial with them, and what we said to the company is, we want to see how this works with our Tier 2 students and also kids that need enrichment. We want to see, will this program extend kids that need the challenge? And so we've got certain people that are definitely going to gather data. We also want to compare this program with Compass Learning, which is another adaptable online practice tool, also Common Core aligned. So we're gathering data. Again, it's that trial and error, but for the kids that have started to get a little bit of access and the teachers that went home and practiced, and while we were waiting for this to all come about, we've had very, very strong reviews. So it's something you might have in your home and might be practicing. We would love the feedback from parents as well. One really lovely feature is it works on the iPad, so parents can do it wherever. And again, it's got this sort of game component, so I think kids are going to naturally want to spend a little bit more time on it. And more importantly, educationally, it's got all the visual models. It is not a skill and drill program. It is about helping them make sense of mathematics. So it's another layer of intervention that we've kind of rolled in, but it's more than intervention.
And I think, Rob, you know, your question about their day, the directive was, the principal would help them design the day unique to the building. But we're looking for more push-in than pull-out. That it's no longer about getting, to get the help, you need to go to a different place. Everyone can be in the same place and get the intervention they need. So it does look different in each building depending on the unique needs, but there was a very clear message. We are not looking to be pulling kids out all day for private skill and drill in a separate room. It's about working with the teachers, working with the enrichment teachers, the special education teachers, and getting into those classrooms during the math time.
During workplaces.
Yeah, during workplaces, so.
The logistics of that is obviously confusing. Do you bring all the kids from a grade that need help to the same classroom, or does the TA go into four different second-grade classrooms, or does it vary? Maybe that's too detailed.
It varies based on the grade level, the number of kids that need support, and when they have math. So I think it's going to be a combination, but part of, again, this time period is to really investigate and study and have the TAs try different things, talk to each other, talk to Nikki, and see what's working. So it is, it is a bit of trial and error, but the bottom line is, there's an extra support person with a lot of, you know, getting a lot of training from the coach and collaborating with the classroom teacher. We don't want the kids outside of the classroom doing something that's totally unrelated to what they're doing in the classroom. So even if they're pulled out, the goal is that it's connected. So it's Core Plus More versus, "I'm doing something with you that has nothing to do with what I'm doing in the classroom."
Thank you very much for that report. It's much appreciated. Really exciting. Thank you. We have one change to the agenda. Also, as everyone knows, we've had a couple of, actually four days when school didn't meet because of cold weather, and the district has been working hard to find a practical way to make up that time so that we can keep everyone learning on schedule. And we're going to ask Dr. Hendrickson to explain how that's going to work. Dr. Hendrickson.
Well, we had a plan a couple of weeks ago that changed as of early this week. So currently, to make up our four days that we've missed, we would, we were thinking a little bit about President's Day, but I want to be clear, we're planning on having that holiday still. So no change on President's Day coming up in February. The first change would occur in April on Thursday, the 17th, where we were planning no school attendance. It was planned as a teacher institute day, full teacher institute day. We would change that into a half-day attendance and half-day school improvement. For the state, that counts as a full day. So that's one. We would extend Thursday, June 5th, which would have been our last day had we had no emergency days, into a full day. That doesn't add anything for the state number. And then we add three more attendance days beyond the 5th to come up with those four missed days. So Friday, June 6th, full-day attendance, Monday, June 9th, full-day attendance, Tuesday, the 10th, would be our AM attendance, last day of school, and that is our four makeup days.
Thank you.
Assuming now that, you know, we're good to go. And so this is a tentative proposed amendment to the calendar, which we would have you finalize probably in April. So no action is needed, but if this is not the direction you'd like, then we can restudy.
There could still be a flood or locusts or any sort of Old Testament sort of thing. Could I ask if, will this change the date of 8th grade graduation?
We've decided not to change graduation.
And that will be on which day?
Oh, gosh, I don't know right offhand. I can look it up.
But it's before the last three days, is that correct?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So the 8th graders will, do you think they'll go attend, or?
Typically, they don't attend after graduation and dance. I should also say, the high school's looking at the same model that they'll be in school on President's Day and then looking at some similar changes. They would be out of school currently on potentially the Friday or the Monday, depending on how they respond to this. So we will go a day or two later than they, but we were going to go one day later than they were anyway, I believe. No, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not true. Anyway, this is an extension for us.
It is an extension, yes. All right, thank you. Do other board members have questions?
I was just wondering, when was the last day for teachers, and when will it be now?
The last day for everyone would have been Thursday, June 5th, and we would have had an afternoon in-service for teachers on that day. Kids would have gone home at 11:00 or 11:30. The last day for students is Tuesday. The last day for teachers will be Wednesday. And that's a great question, Mr. Lemke, because that's where we take the Thursday, April 17th institute and move it to Wednesday as a full-day institute. Good question.
I'm not sure if it's a question for you, Andy, for Mike, or for Bill. I try not to speak for other people. Rick has asked me to bring this up, and I share his views on it. I know that he's shared a pretty detailed email with Mike and with some, and there's some concern, which I share, that we're adding full days to the end. It's after tests, it's after curriculum's done, they may look like fluff days. I appreciate that you said it's a proposal. Now is clearly not the right time at 11:30, whatever time it is. Is the board going to have an opportunity to talk about this issue, rescheduling of the days?
We don't.
Is that right now?
Well, the thing that we're bumping up against is, we have the April 17th date, which we've changed. The next one's coming up, and that's why we wanted to make sure and talk about it tonight, were President's Day, so we don't have a meeting until after that. And so there are really two very compelling reasons to, you know, a number of reasons not to do it on the 14th, that is not a student attendance day. Valentine's Day, we've got a, that's our tri-district day, and we run into difficulties with that, with, I believe it's the high school needing to have that tri-district day on that day. We've also had, we've committed to an author, Dr. Wilcox mentioned earlier, to fly in on that day. It's all three. And so in terms of changing the direction of our teaching and our learning, that's a very, very important day for us. It's also an important day for our collaboration with 65. So we've spent a lot of time working with them, coordinating with them on the plan for that day, so it's a day-long in-service day. On President's Day, likewise, you know, I polled area superintendents, how many are going to use that day as an attendance day? More in our area are not going to use that as an attendance day than are, far more are not going to use that. And Dr. Hendrickson, you remember probably more than I do about some of the rationale for President's Day not being used once you jumped in there.
One of the concerns would be that we would have difficulty perhaps fielding faculty, you know, families that have kids at home may feel the need to stay home and take care of the kids because they don't have options, like park districts and things like that. We would certainly have lower attendance on that day because of families within Lake Forest that have trips planned and will continue to do that. We were initially thinking high school, Lake Bluff, and Lake Forest 67 would take President's Day as an attendance day, and then that would exacerbate the sub-issue for us. So that's a concern.
There was one other day that could have been considered that was taken off. We are off-school on Good Friday. We are in-school on what's known as Easter Monday. Frankly, I'm not a fan of having school on Easter Monday. I think that's one of the days that parents travel a great deal. And in terms of having school on Good Friday, I did talk to some of our local religious leaders about that, and I think that's a day that we need to stay away from. There are religious observances that our families have during the course of that day, and that would not be a day I would suggest to use.
So I guess we're having a conversation now, and that's okay. I've talked with Rick, and I'm talking for him and I'm talking for me now, which, because he feels pretty strongly on it, as do I. We have President's Day, we have parent-teacher conference days, we have Good Friday and the day before. We're adding, we are making up three emergency days on days of low educational value. And part of the conversation we just had was prioritizing minutes and minutes matter. I would really encourage you to consider some of these other things. I'm not, I am well aware of family vacation days and family vacation plans and the inconvenience it may put on families to do it on President's Day. I understand the state minimum requirements. That's not our priority. Our priority needs to be the kids. And I don't myself think adding three days in June, that's not, in my opinion, putting the kids first. I really think these minutes matter. It's three, we've lost four days, and we're adding three and a half back, and three of them are in June. I don't think those days count. I think those are called fluff days, and I really would urge you to reconsider this. I'm not in favor of this.
You would be in favor of President's Day as a student attendance day?
Absolutely. I don't love the idea, but it's a day that, I talked to teachers on this a couple of days ago this week, and the teachers that I talked to said the exact same thing. There is no flow in June. The teachers have checked out, the kids have checked out, the curriculum is passed, the tests are done. Do I like removing President's Day? Not really, but it's a day of education, and June 10th is not a day of education. June 9th, June 6th, none of those are days of education. We're just checking boxes there.
To clarify, I mean, when you add three days on at the end, do you push tests back? I mean, I know the 8th graders are, they're done.
Report cards go home later, yeah.
I mean, everything is really pushed back, and those three days would be used for learning.
Right. For example, the beach day for 7th grade would be Monday, June 9th, instead of Wednesday, June 4th. I mean, the fluff days get pushed back as well as, you know, everything else.
I'm sharing direct conversation with the teacher that I had Wednesday, that she said point-blank, "The kids are checked out, the teachers are checked out, it's June. It's not real education time. It's just not as high-quality days."
There is, I mean, there are a number of different options there. It can, I think, be quite easily argued that President's Day would be a pretty significantly compromised day for us in terms of student travel. I mean, a large number of students will be absent because they have ski vacations booked and whatnot, but also, and we don't have to be sympathetic to this necessarily, but this is also a day where, and it does come into play, if we do have staff that are absent, we run into significant difficulties getting subs. We can anticipate, because we also might run into an issue with compensation. Mr. Alvis, we're not, that might weigh into it. This is a day that was declared, that was said to be a holiday, and now it is no longer a holiday, and might we get into requiring, having to pay some additional wages for that?
We'd have to check legally, because I don't know under the law. But last year, on the high school side, when we had the strike, we ended up working or having the school day on Veterans Day. People had the option of taking a vacation day later in lieu of, or a trade-off, or being compensated. I have to go back and see. I don't know if that was, if we were given advice legally that we had to give them that option or not, but potentially, yes, it could.
And another, there is another option that we did not include, and this is an option that a number of districts are going to exercise, and that is to take, to forfeit the state aid on those days. And so for one neighboring district, it's $1,100, and for another, it's $2,000. And using that day not as a student day, but as a teacher in-service day, that's another option that we could have. And so I fully agree that an education day in mid-June or early-June is suboptimal. Now, a teacher development day at the end of school is incredibly valuable because that's an opportunity, a very rare opportunity for our teachers to reflect on what just happened. And it's a collective day as well, where they all have that, and that is something that we did not recommend, not knowing what kind of audience it might, what kind of reception it might receive, but that's an option.
Can you talk about April 17th? Why not a whole day?
April 17th is an in-service day, and so we're going to use half of that as a student attendance day and the other half as an in-service day, correct?
Right, right.
And why could that not be an entire student day? Well, we can count that the same way in terms of student attendance, but in terms of a quality instructional day, it's different as a half-day than a whole day.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like it on this calendar.
This is the existing calendar.
Right. Are we not taking the Monday after spring break off? We're not, are we?
We are not.
Okay.
No. We do have, we do have Good Friday off.
The next year, the following Monday's going to be off.
Right, in 2015, 16.
I didn't quite understand your answer, Mike, I'm sorry. On April 17th, I understand it's an in-service day. I understand it counts for the state, counting for the it's an in-service day. I understand it counts for the state. Counting for the state's not my concern. Kids' minutes is. And doing a three-hour botched-up day versus a full day? Can we consider that?
We could, we could make that a full day and then move that in-service day.
I think part of our thinking around that was, we were concerned about losing a lot of students that day, too, because of planned vacations. And so, you know, could we do special events on that day and a half-day as opposed to having a full day and try to just miss a lot of kids? But we could certainly look at that. And we have time to look at that.
I missed my message, and then I'll be quiet. Speaking for Rick and I, our concern isn't meeting state minimum requirements. That's not the priority. Priority's the kids. Our concern isn't managing families' vacation plans that they choose to do. It's the kids. It's got to be about the kids. And those other things become a pain in the neck, but it's got to be about the kids.
Would there be interest in foregoing the state aid and using those days at the end as in-service days, instead of having those being teacher or student attendance days?
I don't think that really addresses Mr. Brokowski's issue.
I think we could, we could, at this point in time, share that there will be student attendance on April 17th, and then the board could make a decision in the next month, if you'd like to discuss it more, about whether that would be a half-day or full-day. We don't have to make that full decision today unless you'd like to.
Andy, how did you say the high school is handling the missing days?
See, the high school is, the high school, you know, I'd really rather not say definitively what they're going to do, because it's really up to their board, and they have a chance to meet. It's just a proposal. But they won't be, in any scenario, they won't be going into Tuesday as their last day of finals. They would really have preferred to have their last finals on Friday, the 6th. I think it's the 6th, yeah. And I think that's what they're hoping to manage.
While this is obviously not ideal going into, you know, the middle or the, you know, first full week of June, one thing I would say is that for people who have spent real money on thoughtful vacations, their kids are going to be missing out if we now reinstitute school on those days. So, we're taking away from those kids thoughtfully.
Well, I'll say the obvious, which is, I'm not quite sure why school days in June have to be fluff days. I mean, the teachers are supposed to be working. Administrators are supposed to make sure they're working. The fact that we're going to move back our tests or whatever we have, I mean, I don't understand why those can't be real days.
That would be our plan, to make the most out of those. It is more difficult, for sure.
I think, my key takeaway from this is, whenever possible, make up a full day with another full day. And if there's an opportunity to do that on the 17th, that would probably be ideal. If there are circumstances beyond our control relative to why that's not possible, we need to discuss it. But if that's an opportunity, I think we need to try and, you know, take a full day with a full day as opposed to two half-days, because to Mike's point, you just don't get a whole lot done on a half-day, just by sheer reality of the logistics, so.
I think half-days become fluff days. I'm not sure a random day in June necessarily has to be a fluff day.
I think if that's the board's direction, to make April 17th a full day, that's, that would, you know, certainly, you know, we'd be pleased with that as well.
So, not to put Leslie on the spot, but at one point, didn't you whisper in my ear that we're off after Easter?
I was incorrect. It's not until next year.
All right.
I did.
No more whispering. Thank you, Dr. Hendrickson. So, okay. Thank you very much. We now come to Board Committee Reports. First is the Education Committee chaired by Ms. Leslie Fisher.
This is for the Education Committee. The Education Committee did not meet this month. And we will be meeting Tuesday, February 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Next is Finance and Operations. Mr. Schuler, Mr. Schuler's not here. Is there another representative of the Finance and Operations Committee who would like to make a statement?
I don't recall meeting.
I defer to Mr. Lempke on all of these matters.
Thank you, Mr. Lempke. Next is the Policy Committee, Mr. Brokowski.
Policy Committee did meet. I'll try to shorten it and talk fast. Met on January 9th. Present were Jeff Fulker, Todd, Nikki, Ted, Mike, Andy, Alan, Jen, Eileen, and myself. This was the first of Part II meeting. At this meeting, we discussed a number of proposed policy changes called press items. These come from the IASB. Some are minor, some are more substantial. The admin came with their thoughts. We talked about each one, and I believe in every case, the committee agreed with both the admin as well as had alignment with 115. That's going to come for vote later tonight. And the Policy Committee, our best thinking was that they all made sense according to what we said. That joint meeting adjourned at 8:45. Then, we started a District 67 Policy Committee. And Jeff, Mike Semick, Andy, Alan, Jen, Eileen, and myself stayed for that. Our first topic was to review the charter for the Policy Committee. That's up on the web for anyone to look at. Our next topic was a follow-up discussion on Section 6:40, which is how innovative educational programs and pilot programs are created, and what, if any, board involvement or oversight is required. We talked about this at the last board meeting. We're looking at changing language to tighten that up a little bit and define some minimum requirements for the board to have in approving pilot programs. We don't want that to restrict innovation, and so, we're struggling with how to get that just right. We're going to be meeting again in a few weeks, and we plan on coming to the board at our next board meeting with an actual proposal of some sort to vote up or down. Lastly, at that policy meeting, we briefly discussed two topics which will, we're going to begin discussions at our next policy meeting. Those are looking at the fund balance policy and considering adding words requiring certain reporting to the board if the fund balance goes over or under certain thresholds. For example, a report detailing the planned uses of funds could be something we look at. Topic number two that we're going to be discussing will involve the pension reform and the district's practice, providing employees the automatic max-level salary increases during the so-called retirement pipeline. Those issues both involve other committees, the Finance Committee and the Compensation Committee, and they have been invited and are planning on attending the next Policy Committee. So, it'll, will involve the experts as well. Our friends at Lake Bluff District 65 have recently adopted policies of some sort on both the fund balance and the automatic salary increases. So, we'll have those to look at as well. They may or may not be best practice, but we'll have that to compare to. Superintendent Semick also requested that we include a review of the policies defining resignation and suspension approval, and we hope to talk about that as well at our next meeting. That meeting adjourned at 10:00 a.m. after that Policy Committee. Our district clerk, Eileen Fowler, informed me that we need to do a review of the bullying and harassment policy prior to mid-March for some compliance issues. So, that also is going to be on our agenda. The next Policy Committee is scheduled for February 19th. Given the amount of stuff I just said we're going to be going over, I suspect we're going to also schedule a second meeting in late February. That concludes the policy report. Jeff, if you want to add anything, or if anyone has any questions?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brokowski and Mr. Fulker. The next liaison report is Ed Redd. There is no report this month. The next report is the Curriculum Coordinating Committee. Once again, Ms. Leslie Fisher.
The Curriculum Coordinating Committee did not meet this month. We will be meeting on February 6th.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. The next item is the Spirit of 67 Foundation, Ms. Leslie Fisher.
I was unable to attend the Spirit of 67 Foundation Executive Board meeting this past month. On my behalf, Jeff Fulker was kind enough to attend, and he is going to give a report. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Yes, on Tuesday, January 14th, I had the pleasure of sitting in for Mrs. Fisher at the January Spirit of 67 Board Meeting. I'll hit some of the key highlights that came out of that meeting. Support for the Spirit of 67 continues at record levels, both in terms of dollars and participation. Through December of 2013, the Spirit has received close to $116,000 in donations, with over 43% of families district-wide participating and contributing to this total. Both of these numbers are historical highs for this point in the fiscal year. So, well done. Outstanding. On a school-specific level, every school in the district has a family participation rate of over 40%. Again, this is the first time that has happened at this stage of the game, so. Grant season is underway. All grant requests were due in by January 23rd. And starting this week, the 14-member Grants Committee led by Molly Sarver will begin the arduous but important process of reviewing applications from teachers, staff, students, and parents. This process entails them meeting three days a week for four hours at a time to make sure that every application is considered carefully and reviewed. So, a big thank you in advance to the committee for all their hard work and commitment to District 67. Lastly, Mr. Semick was present at the meeting to present two checks to the Spirit, one of which was made in the memory of former District 67 Board of Education President Mark Mitter, who had passed away recently. Mr. Mitter had specifically requested that in lieu of flowers, contributions be made in his memory to the Spirit of 67. So, obviously, posthumously, we thank him and his family for that. Lastly, Baytree Bank donated $330 to the Spirit as a part of their annual holiday giving program, and so, we thank them for that as well. The next Spirit Board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 11th, and I hope Mrs. Fisher will be able to attend.
I am planning on it. Thank you.
Lovely.
In addition, really quickly, Bill, in addition to Jeff's report, I am serving on the Grants Committee and want to thank Lauren and Lori for coming to speak to the committee. It was our first meeting this past week, and they did a great briefing on Common Core standards, because in a lot of the grants, of course, they are mentioned. And to a lot of people on this committee, they just really wanted the details behind it. So, thank you for your time. And I also want to say that through this thoughtful process of reviewing grants, it's important to note that last year, the Spirit of 67 awarded, bless you, over $200,000 to grants. And these are all things within our children's classrooms that affect and enhance their learning every day. And it's something we should be really, really proud of. And they do a fantastic job of raising funds and really deliberating about where and whom they should go to. So, kudos to them.
If I could also add, Mrs. Mitter, Mark Mitter's wife, said that this was Mark's last request, that any donations that were made on his behalf, that the Spirit of 67 be the recipient of those. He's a very, by all accounts, an incredible gentleman, incredibly decent and giving person, and served a number of years as a very distinguished board president here.
Thank you, Mr. Semick. The next item is the report from APT, Leslie Fisher.
I did attend the APT Executive Board meeting, held on January 15th. And just a couple of notes from that meeting. President Allison CK discussed the presence, the new presence of a Community Resource Officer. Officer Conrad Christiansen will have a presence at all of our District 67 buildings. In addition to his presence, he will also participate in grades 5 through 8 health classes, after-school supervision, focusing on social media and safety. And this is a great partnership with the city. There was some discussion about, were children surprised to see an officer in the building? Were parents being communicated properly to? There had been a Friday Flyer announcement prior to his arrival. And then the following week, there was actually a more extensive Friday Flyer announcement, which I thought was really great and explained his role there. In addition, Superintendent Semick gave an update, and of course, talked about the book, the book read, and the book tour, I refer to it as, "The Smartest Kids in the World." And we have a lot of takers. So, looking forward to getting together in mid-February to discuss the book.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. We now come to action items. Excuse me, Mr. Brokowski. Yes, I don't know. The next item is NSSCD, Mike Brokowski.
Quickly, the NSSCD Governing Board met January 8th. The main thing at that meeting, the NSSCD Superintendent, reviewed what steps are being taken in response to Highland Park District 112 announcing a withdrawal, its intent to withdraw. His goal is for programming not to be diminished. He's looking at reducing expenses. They're offering early retirements as well as implementing a RIF. He projects that all the membership fees of all the member districts should be reduced by 10%. For this, that would mean, for us, our district, that means a savings of maybe about $3,000. As we previously discussed, the vast majority of our cost is through the payment of our IDEA funds and through our direct services. The next meeting's March 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Brokowski. My apologies for skipping over that. We now come to action items. The first item is acceptance of the 2013 audit. Mr. Semick?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I recommend that the 2013 audit be approved as presented.
Are there comments or discussion from board members? May I have a motion to accept the 2013 audit as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And a roll-call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lempke?
Aye.
Mr. Brokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the 2013 through 2018 holiday calendar waiver. Mr. Semick?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. As Dr. Hendrickson discussed earlier, the holiday calendar waiver, I recommend it being approved as presented.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the holiday calendar waiver?
So moved.
Second.
Roll-call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Lempke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Brokowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is approval to waive Press Issue 83 Policy Update First Reading. Comment from any board members?
This is what I referred to in the policy meeting. The Policy Committee agrees with this.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to waive the first reading of Press Issue 83 Policy Update?
So moved.
Second.
Roll-call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lempke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is the approval of Press, approval of Press Issue 83 Policy Update Second Reading. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue 83 Policy Update?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A roll-call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lempke?
Aye.
Mr. Brokowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is approval of release of executive session minutes from June 2013 through November 2013. Discussion by board members? Comment by Mr. Semick? Hearing none? May I have a motion to approve the release of the executive session minutes from June 2013 to November 2013?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll-call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lempke?
Aye.
Mr. Brokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. The next item is approval of the Human Resources Report. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll-call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lempke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Brokowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is the approval of consent agenda items. The next item is the approval of Consent Agenda Items. Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed for further discussion? Hearing none? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Volker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have one FOIA request for District 67 from Nancy Thorne of Lake Bluff. Announcements, Friday, February 14th, 2014, Tri-District Institute Day. No student attendance. Monday, February 17th, 2014, is President's Day, no school. Wednesday, February 19th, 2014, Late Start Day, grades 5 through 8, 10:30, 5:00 a.m. The next District 67 Board of Education meeting is scheduled for February 25th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. in the Lake Forest West Campus Boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Lake Forest District 67 Board of Education?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.